Bienvenidos al tabernac de la ciudad de Whittall, en el mayor cruce de la isla del Norte. Esta noche el evangelista Nicky Cruz va a compartir su historia. Y qué mejor forma de comenzar que por un acto de adoración juntos. Amén. Gracias a Dios. Me he dado cuenta de Calvary, donde Jesús se volvió y murió por mí. Vi sus manos y sus pies. Salvé ese árbol encarnado. Su cuerpo estaba lleno de sangre y lágrimas. Le dijeron que se marchara. Entró al mar por medio de un sueño de Dios. Señor Dios, bendiga sea su nombre. Oh, bendiga sea el nombre del Señor nuestro Dios. Oh, bendiga su nombre para siempre. Para siempre, nos cantaremos su gloria. Oh, Señor, oh Señor nuestro Dios. Luego de la tercera gravedad y el desmayo, El Hijo de Él resaltó de nuevo. Oh, infierno, ¿dónde estás? Los ángeles gritan por Cristo el Rey. Oh, bendiga sea el nombre del Señor nuestro Dios. Oh, bendiga su nombre para siempre. Para siempre, nos cantaremos su gloria. Oh, oh, Él volverá. Él volverá en ropas de ¡hallelujah! El sol brillante despejará la noche. Y yo me levantare entre los cielos. Mi gloria se transformará en la fe de Jesús. Oh, bendiga sea el nombre del Señor nuestro Dios. Para siempre, Jesús, bendiga sea su nombre. Nos cantaremos su gloria. Oh, Señor, oh Señor nuestro Dios. Oh, bendiga sea el nombre del Señor nuestro Dios. Oh, bendiga su nombre para siempre. Para siempre, nos cantaremos su gloria. Oh, oh, Señor nuestro Dios. ¡Este es el último momento! Oh, bendiga sea el nombre del Señor nuestro Dios. Oh, bendiga su nombre para siempre. Para siempre, nos cantaremos su gloria. Oh, oh, Señor nuestro Dios, oh Señor. Oh, oh, Señor nuestro Dios. Oh, oh, Señor nuestro Dios. ¿Podemos levantarnos o cerrar los ojos mientras traemos nuestro tiempo al Señor en oración esta noche? Almightyo Dios, creador de el cielo y la tierra, venimos a ti esta noche en el enorme nombre, el grande nombre, el nombre glorioso y majestuoso del Señor de la gloria, el Señor Jesús Cristo. Gracioso Dios, hay muchas personas aquí esta noche con muchas necesidades, grandes necesidades. Hay gente aquí esta noche, Dios, con circunstancias y situaciones que no pueden manejar. Te pido, gracia Dios, que camines entre nosotros esta noche. Te pido, gracia Dios, que bendiga a Nicky Cruz mientras viene y habla. Le pido, gracia Dios, que no solo esté escuchando a Nicky, pero le pido, Dios, que tu Espíritu se mueva de lugar a lugar, corazón a corazón. Y esta noche le pido que muchas personas, jóvenes y viejas, de todos los caminos de la vida, que esta noche muchas personas tendrán una encuentro salvador, un encuentro restaurador con Jesús Cristo. Le pido, Dios, que cada corazón abra y que tu palabra caiga en esos corazones y traiga vida. Dios, bendiga a todas las personas aquí. Dios, la gente aquí, Dios, piensan que el mundo no les importa y nadie les importa. Que hoy saben que te preocupan. Que bendiga todo lo que se ha dicho y hecho. Y esta noche, que Jesús Cristo sea magnificado, que Jesús Cristo sea elevado. Gracias, gracia Dios, por estar interesado en cada uno de nosotros. Te invitamos aquí esta noche, muevete entre nosotros y haz tu camino. En el grande nombre de Jesús, en el nombre de la gloria, le pidió y pidió. Amén. crecí aburridamente leyendo libros cristianos como "El cruz y la espada de switchblade" de Dave Wilkinson, que cuenta la historia de algunas de las gangas salvajes de Nueva York y cómo encontraron a Cristo. Uno de esos líderes de la ganga era Nicky Cruz, quien hoy está compartiendo lo que Dios ha hecho en su vida. Aquí está un video corto de su ministerio.
Yo nací en la ciudad de Nueva York. Algo salió mal en mi vida. Nunca escogí ser lo que era. Mi vida de crimen fue muy seria. ¿Por qué? Las cosas pueden pasar así. Quiero agradecer a Jesús Cristo por la vida, porque Él es el que me dio la vida. Y puedo ver el camino para el Espíritu Santo que ya está moviéndose en esa área. Necesitamos realmente despertar y darse cuenta de que no podemos ser pasivos, que tenemos que ser agresivos en el camino de la evangelición. Jesús Cristo es la respuesta, y eso... llama a mí fanático, llama a mí lo que quieras, pero veo al Espíritu Santo en acción. Veo a Jesús Cristo cambiando la vida en todo el mundo. Así que sé que eso es lo que necesitamos. Jesús Cristo, a través de una poder tremenda sobre el pueblo joven.
Gracias a Dios. Bueno, damas y caballeros, estamos contentos de tener a Nicky Cruz con nosotros esta noche. Y sé que muchos de ustedes han leído su historia y han sido afectados por su historia. Pero aquí está, lo vamos a presentar ahora mismo. ¿Podrías hacerle bienvenida, darle un bienvenido muy amable mientras viene y habla con nosotros? Gracias, Nicky Cruz.
Estoy muy feliz de estar aquí. No es mi primera vez. Y cuando miro alrededor, ya sabes, tal vez soy yo quien hablo con todo tipo de personas. Pero algunos de ustedes, se ven tan serios. ¿Es eso tu costumbre? ¿Sabes qué? Hazme un favor. monotonía y tibetana situación. ¿Qué pasa con ustedes, choir, todos ustedes? Vengan. Déjalos ir. Eso es lo que quiero, salgan de su camino. Chihuahua, hagan lo que tengan que hacer. Ahora estás sonriendo. Uh-huh, sí. Sabes, cuando llegué a Estados Unidos, la primera vez fue cuando la película "El cruz y la espada de switchblade" fue hecha en 1968. Y me invitaron a venir a Londres. Y hablé en uno de los lugares más notorios de Estados Unidos en Londres, la Albert Royal Hall. Y estaba mirando tantos pisos. Y, sí, en el medio está el trono de la reina que viene a conciertos o lo que sea. Y el lugar estaba tan lleno. Fue un sábado tarde. Y estaba en el backstage por mí mismo en esta habitación. Y pasaron las emociones del servicio. Y luego había miles de chicas. Luego llamaron mi nombre, damas y caballeros, señor Nicky Cruz. Luego empecé a caminar hacia el escenario. Las chicas empezaron a decir, ¡oh, no! Estaban esperando a Eric Estrada, el tipo que jugó mi parte. Me lastimó. Nací en una isla en Puerto Rico. Llegué a la ciudad de Nueva York. Y muchas cosas pasaron. Cosas que nunca esperabas en tu vida, pasaron. Parecía que la vida estaba en falla cuando era un niño. Lo que pasó en la ciudad de Nueva York fue muchas cosas que yo arrepiento. Muchas arrepentencias. Personas que murieron de ambos lados. De mis gangas, de las otras. El problema racial comenzó a ser tan profundo que estábamos matando unos a otros. Y las calles de Nueva York, la calle de la valla, estaba llena de sangre. Y cuando miras ese sangre que estaba corriendo en las calles, cuando hay un niño negro que murió, lo que corre allí no es sangre negra. Cuando mueres a un portero negro, lo que está corriendo allí en la calle no es sangre negra. Cuando mueres a un hombre blanco, no es sangre blanca. Es rojo. Sangre roja, roja. Parecía que entrabas a ese lugar de inmortalidad. No tenías miedo al asiento eléctrico porque no tenías tal vez la capacidad o la habilidad de realmente sentarse y pensar las consecuencias. Pero hay una cosa que sé, que cuando la vida comenzó a ponerse difícil para mí, no lo esperaba. Terminamos en una de las peores peleas de sangre en Brooklyn, Nueva York, cuando me reuní a tres diferentes gangas para destruir otra ganga. Esa noche duró solo cinco minutos, no puedes ir más allá de eso. No sabes si quieres vivir. Te saltas de un lugar, saltas de un carro a otro carro, detienes a la persona, lo haces, disparas, y lo que sea. Y aún así, cuando esto terminó, le dije a mi amigo que era sin salida. Tengo un pequeño lugar que solía alquilar por quince dólares por semana. Y solía robar el dinero de todos modos. Así que lo que pasó fue que íbamos, tomamos el tren, el subway. Y cuando llegamos al parque donde solía vivir, le dije a mi amigo, no vas a dormir, no vas a dormir en la calle. No vas a dormir en el tren que circula 24 horas y cambia de tren y otros trenes. Cuando subimos todo el camino hasta la calle, el lugar donde solía vivir era aproximadamente tres cuadras y media. Luego noté que este espejo se movía tan rápido. Y nos alejamos rápidamente, ya sabes, eres callejón. Tienes esta psicología de peligro o lo que sea. Puedes leer a una persona tan fácilmente. Y sabes si la persona es fuerte, si la persona tiene las ganas de cosas así. Pero recuerdo que cuando vi este espejo moviéndose, le dije a mi amigo que comenzara a correr. Era una preparación. Estaban esperando por mí. Y luego arrepentí, realmente arrepentí de haberle dicho a mi amigo que quedase conmigo. Porque esa noche, mientras corrí, justo así, cuando hice la turnada, miré y mi amigo no estaba allí. Así que sabía exactamente lo que pasó, así que entré para defenderme, para perder mi vida, para morir por él. Ese era el código de la ética en las gangas. No te engañan, tienes que ser fiel. Y aquí está, veo esas espadas subiendo y bajando. Y las miro y entro y me lastimó. Luego comencé a buscar a mi amigo, no podía ver porque el sangre me estaba cayendo. Y luego, cuando estaba en mis rodillas y buscándolo, estaba allí, colgado, plano, cara hacia abajo. Miré su cabeza, la agarré por su cabello. Y la agarré. Y comencé a llorar con él. No muerdas en mí, no vas a hacer esto a mí. No vas a hacer esto a mí. ¿Entiendes? Voy a llevarte al hospital, vas a sobrevivir, eres fuerte. Somos fuertes y nadie puede juzgar con nosotros, pero tienes que ser fuerte ahora. Lo que estaba haciendo, estaba hablando con un cuerpo muerto, muerto. Quiero llorar, y ahora vas a saber por qué. Quiero llorar tan mal. Solo quiero dejar que esas cosas golpeen su cara para que pueda ver que tengo algunos sentimientos. Que no estaba tan mal como estaba pintado por los medios o lo que sea. Pero hay algo en mí, no podía llorar, no podía llorar en absoluto, no podía... Todo mi alma estaba derramada. ¿Por qué estaba así? Flashback. Flashback. Déjame llevarte a Puerto Rico. Las cosas pasaron mal. Sé, como sé la Biblia hoy, no pedí a Dios que me puse en los huesos de un sacerdote. Mi madre era un sacerdote. Mi padre era un sacerdote satánico. Estábamos viviendo bajo una maldición. El día en que mi madre me puso en el mundo del vivir fue un día muy frío porque cuando estás en los huesos de tu madre, eres protector, hay algo ahí, hay una protección cuando estás en los huesos de tu madre. Y aún cuando experimentas lo frío que es este mundo, ese niño, ese bebé, comenzó a llorar porque comenzó a sentir lo frío que es. Y a través de todo esto, no soy el único en la familia, quiero ser honesto con todos ustedes. No soy el único en mi familia. Tengo 17 hermanos y una hermana. Sí, mi padre era un lobo, un niño lobo. Todos nosotros nacimos bajo una maldición. No voy a ver a mi abuelo en el cielo, murió adorando al diablo. Sacrificando animales al diablo, todas estas cosas. Esto fue miedo, posee nuestra familia. Mi madre era poseída por un demonio. Todos vamos a ir al infierno. Es como decir, bienvenidos, todos vamos a ir al infierno. Esa fue la maldición que la familia Cruz tenía. Y los miedos, la gente temía a mi familia, especialmente a mi padre. Nunca tuve la experiencia de llenar las labios de mi madre o mi mejilla. Nunca me besó. O las fuerzas de mi brazo de padre me agarraron y me sentí seguro. El diablo atacó tan fuerte y quería mi alma tan mal. Mi madre comenzó a insultarme cuando era un niño. Quiero decir, brutalmente golpeada por mi madre. No sexualmente. Y recuerdo que alguna vez me golpeó tan duro que desperté después de que no estuviera consciente, no sé, por mucho tiempo, en un pool de sangre. Escuché a mi madre maldiciérmela, me arrancó, me quitó los pantalones, me arrancó mi cuerpo a esta habitación, cerró la puerta. Y aquí mis labios se dividieron, mi nariz se rompió, mis ojos se cerraron porque todas las golpes que recibí de mi madre. Ella las hizo varias veces. Cuando tenía nueve años, eso fue. Cuando tenía nueve años, mi madre estaba en frente de estas chicas, había unas cinco chicas, y estaba caminando. Y sabes, como un niño, a veces miras los aviones. Y solía fingir que era un avión, y solía, ya sabes, extender mis brazos y decirle que era un avión, fingiendo que era un avión. La libertad de ese avión en el cielo era tan hermosa. Y aquí, en esa situación, cuando tenía nueve años, fue la última vez que mi madre me golpeó. Y esa es la última vez que ella va a poner las manos en mí. Me golpeó tan duro, me cerró. Y estaba agarrando mi dolor porque aquí estoy respirando y dos de mis tobillos de mi lado izquierdo se rompieron. Aquí estoy en una posición de pie, estoy agarrando mi dolor. Y aquí estoy pidiendo a mi madre que me dé un vaso de agua. Pidiéndole. Y a través de las puertas que se rompan, ella puede sentir el dolor que estaba pasando. ¿Por qué? ¿Por que mi madre venga y me maldiciéramos? Me agarrara por mis dos brazos y me forzara a mirar a sus ojos en frente de esas chicas. Dice, mira a mí. No quiero mirar. Sé lo que está llegando, conocí a mi madre. Mira a mí. Y estaba llorando tan duro, tan temprano. Y otra vez, hasta que levanté mi cara y miré a sus ojos, estaba tan oscuro, rosa. No se ve como un ser humano. Ese día lo sentí. Strong, poderosa pensamiento, mata a ti mismo. Mata a ti mismo. Y estaba escuchando. Fue como si me estuviera empujando, y tomé una raya y la puse alrededor de mi cuello, la pegué muy fuerte. Cabeza un árbol mango con las otras ramas, la pegué. Puse mis brazos así para que pudiera subir todo el camino. Y luego está mi hermano de nowhere. No podía vivir lo que estaba planeando hacer. Estaba sin palabras. Estaba llorando tan duro, pero parecía que no había eco proveniente de dentro de él porque estaba totalmente, estaba totalmente tomado por lo que estaba planeando hacer. Y luego él solo gritó, dijo, ¡no, no, 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 no lo hagas! Y aquí le dije, odio a ella. Odio sus ganas. Ella no es un ser humano. Nunca quiero verte de nuevo. ¿Sabes qué me dejó mi madre ese día? Cuando me agarró por mis dos brazos y comenzó a llorar conmigo. No eres mi hijo, ¿entiendes? Nunca te amo. Y sal de mi vida. And get out of my life. I don't wanna see you again. You are son of the devil." Look, my mother talking about the devil. "You are son of the devil. You are failure. Get out of my life. I cursed the day that I brought you into this world." These is my mother words. Why else can hurt me anymore? She put the dagger all the way straight. She pushes so strong, she killed me right there. She killed me. Because I was immune to the physical pain, nothing ever. Go ahead, hit me. I don't feel no more pain. But when you come down and tell you, "I cursed the day that I brought you into this world," when she tells you in your face, "You ugly," that's a lie from hell. That's not true. That's not true. The devil is a liar, right? The fathers of lie. I gave my mother wish. Here I'm running wild in the street of New York. And you know something? I wanna tell you something. I don't know how in the world I survive. You should see the danger that I went through. Why the devil could not kill me? Why the devil could not kill me when I went through showers of bullets and no bullet hit me? Why? Why my mother in those moments of rage, she didn't came into my, my little room when I was with three of my brother? And why my mother, she didn't, she took a pillow and just, why don't you press it on my face and get me out of this misery? Why? Why I didn't got killed in New York in my early days? You know why? Because I was born to serve the Lord and the devil could not kill me at all because God have a plan for all of us. And so I don't wanna go into all the details. But things began to happen so fast and was in an hour jail. The criminal court of Brooklyn gave me a psychiatrist to psychoanalyze me. I end up psychoanalyzing the psychiatrist. You don't come to jail and tell a guy that is in, that I'm blacked up, "You are bad, bad boy." I look at him, "What you think I'm doing? What, what, what is this reason I'm here for? That I'm a nice guy?" But you know, after all the burning situations and New York was in fire, we was the pioneers of the gangs. We send a message to the whole nations. And that spirit was in fire all over from New York to California. And I remember just like this, as worse it was getting, as worse as people, young people were killing one another. There's something strange that began to happen. The spirit of the Lord was moving in a little town of Pennsylvania. And there was a preacher by the name of David Wilkinson, a pastor. And in prayer, the Holy Spirit began to speak to him. "It's urgent, go to New York." At the same time, Mrs. Wilkinson was expecting a baby any time, any hours. And there the pressure that was put on David Wilkinson, it was so heavy that he tried to go across the street and go to the little church that he used to pastor. He didn't made it. Right in the middle of the aisle, it fall right on his face and start weeping and weeping and weeping until six o'clock in the morning. And then he came and his wife was waiting for him. She got her back against the wall and told Dave, "Go. Go to New York." Wilkinson came in a station wagon. When Wilkinson came, he came into one of the worst time in the history of New York. When Wilkinson came, he didn't know what he was doing. It's not gonna be easy. I was about three block down and the police told him, "Sir, don't go to that place, they're gonna kill you. You know what you gonna do? That you gonna make us go down and get your dead body out of that neighborhood. They're gonna kill you, the savage, they're gonna kill you." "Who gonna go with you?" The captain told Dave. Wilkinson right away say, "God gonna be with me." The captain told him, "He better go with you because we are not going with you at all." And he did it. Look at this guy. A country preacher. I was with my girlfriend, you know, and we have all this way, the way we walk, you know, with this swinging, where we call jitterbug with all of these things. Yeah, baby, and all. Come out of here, you know, all of this junk that we, that we used to do in the streets. And then, and then I remember that there is, I was with my girlfriend. I saw people running from everywhere. And when you initiate a guy, you take the guy who gonna be initiated, you face him with strong eyes, you try to intimidate him. You just tell the rule about why you join the gangs. You got to choose between a knife, between the twenty-five pipe long ones or get beat up by the best fighter of the gangs. And here, when you are talking to this guy, you change your voice, you know that? Because you wanna intimidate him. You face him. And you tell him, "When I say you come, you come, you understand? When I say you go, you go. I don't wanna see your face. You understand?" And here I'm with my girl and I saw these people running to this specific place. And I told my girl, "What in the world is going on?" She say, "Nikki, somebody got killed." That the only time people get so happy in New York. So I say, "No, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna go and I wanna see what happened." And she, I said, "Come, come with me." And she say, "No." I said, "Come with me." And I had to go. When I went like this, forget it. She was running with me together to see Dave Wilkinson. And here is about three hundred people and I heard this voice screaming, "God have the power to change your life right now." Then I start screaming and cursing this guy. "You shut up! There's no God. And if you open your mouth, you are dead man. Do you understand? Shut up!" Wilkinson didn't say nothing. I say, "I wanna see this guy face to face. This guy have lot of guts." So I start pushing the people, and there is the preacher. A hillbilly. A hick. He had never seen a brown guy. He had never been in New York. And here this guy is in a territory, I'm in a diabolic place that to me, Dracula and Frankenstein was afraid to coming into that neighborhood. And here this, this man came in and here I'm facing him. I cursing him, intimidate him, went right straight and I spit at him. I send him straight to hell. And Wilkinson say something with a cracking voice, he say, "Nikki, I came here to bring you a message from heaven. Nikki, Jesus love you." Well, he told me that I just went like this. I say, he confused me. But then I remember that he did something that was unexpected. Because when you look at Dave, if you saw Dave Wilkinson, he really honestly, he was skinny, skinny, skinny like spaghetti. Yeah, yeah. He didn't know how to dress. He dressed like he gonna go to a funeral with a black suit, white shirt, a tiny, tiny black tie. He got those thick, very thick glasses. You try to psychoanalyze him, you couldn't. He's, I was going different direction, up, down, below, hey, hey. You get this and try to psychoanalyze this guy. And out of the blue sky, Wilkinson received something that I saw with my own eyes. It got to be supernatural. David Wilkinson changed in my very eyes. Boldness came upon him. I mean boldness. And he challenged me. And he started screaming, and there's about three hundred people there and some people from my gangs. And he challenged me. And you know what he told me? Screaming at me? "Kill me! Kill me!" I say, "What's the matter with this guy? What's the matter with him? Nikki, you can kill me and cut me in thousand pieces and you can throw them right there on the street, but remember one thing, Nikki. Every little piece gonna crying out to you that Jesus love you, Nikki." That was the message that Wilkinson had for me. That was something that had to be the Holy Spirit. And then he say, "And let me tell you, you can never kill love because God is love. And he gonna haunt you every place that you go." And I say, "You go to hell." And I grab my girlfriend, I start walking, and Dave Wilkinson screaming at me. "He gonna haunt you. You never gonna escape from the Holy Spirit. Jesus love you." I was the most miserable person that you ever seen. For two weeks, everything, "Jesus love you, Jesus love you, Jesus love you." With my girlfriend in my room, "Jesus love you." In the street, "Jesus love you." Fighting, "Jesus love you." And it was getting, it was getting out of my mind. I was going crazy. Everything is, "Jesus in the train, in the bus, stealing, mugging, cheating, lying, Jesus love you. Getting strong, getting high, Jesus love you." Why else? For two weeks, the Holy Spirit, I don't even know nothing about the Holy Spirit, have a tremendous way that those nightmare that I used to, that I used to have because my mother, because my mother, she follow me all over New York in my mind. I remember now everything is, "Jesus love you, Jesus love you, Jesus love you, Jesus love you, Jesus love you." For two weeks, every morning, every afternoon, every evening, "Jesus love you." That was my breakfast, my lunch, and my dinner. "Jesus love you." I'm serious. Very serious. Well, I went to heal the preacher. I didn't wanna go by myself. So I took seventy-five guy for protection. What a tough guy, huh? To heal a skinny preacher. I was shocked. Wilkinson was naive. He invited twelve different gangs, enemies. It's gonna be blood all over that place. Two thousand people. We walking with this swinging jitterbugging way, sending all the signal to the other gangs and all of that. We had to sit down in the front. And I remember that this girl, she start singing a Christian song and I didn't, I didn't know what it was. And when she was singing, we start dancing all over the place. "Hey, baby," and all of these things. The poor girl, she could not finish. She draw the microphone and she split. Wilkinson grabbed the microphone. Can you believe how naive Dave Wilkinson was? He say, right, very loud, "I want five guy from the mama house to collect the offering." I say, "What? What's the matter with this guy? That's an insult. You don't, you don't tell bunch of thief to, to collect money and then give you this big, big, large empty basket." And I tell, "That's the way you want it? A Tico, get up, Willie, Tony, Paco, and I'm gonna take the money too." Can you see me collecting an offering? We been in the gang, seriously? Can you see me going, "Hi, Jesus love you? You, if you put this money here, God gonna double everything, I promise you that. You so nice. Thank you. Put the money here." No! We were screaming, we were cursing the people, the Christians. "Put the money right here now! No, 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 more money, that's not enough." I'm, I'm, I'm serious. And then this guy, I, I look at this guy about three role and he's a Puerto Rican guy, big, tall. He seem like he, life is pick on weights and muscle here. You know those guy that, that they pick on, they love their body. And, and, and if you ask for direction, "Do you know where Fifth Avenue to go?" "Yes, over here." "Yes, over here." You know those guys? I didn't like him. You know, that's his first impression. I didn't like this guy. And Tico was going to get the money. I say, "Tico, hey, it's mine. It's mine." I went and say, I didn't scream at him. I said, "Put the money here." And he did it purposely. Slowly, he went, he took his wallet. That's a mistake. Then he took one dollar bill and he drop it on my basket. I saw a twenty dollar bill. I say, "No, no, 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 no. I want that twenty dollar bill and you gonna drop, drop that money here on my basket." You know? He got the nerve, he got tough. He got spiritual. "You don't tell me what to give. God is the only one who tell me what to give." And I say, "God is up there and down here, and if you don't put that thing, I'm gonna blow your head off. Put the money here." He dropped the whole wallet. I'm, I'm not exaggerating. People was throwing their wallet in the basket. So Wilkinson was very happy with the offering. I gave the money to Dave. And these sensations came so vividly because when I released the money, I took the five baskets and I say, "Here, every penny." He say, "Thank you, Nikki." I said, "For nothing." But then something strange took place. I start laughing. I felt good. And I just put my back against the wall and I start laughing, laughing, and talking to myself. "Hey, Nikki, you're a nice, nice guy, man. People think that you're a thief. Look what you had done. You had gave the money to the preacher." Yeah, I'm a nice guy. That was nothing but a set up. The Holy Spirit set me up because God have something different coming for Nikki Cruz. I didn't see it at all. That night, the gangs wanna fight, I said, no, 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 we not gonna fight. Then I look at Dave Wilkerson, you came to, to speak, go ahead, come on. Go ahead, man. Ladies and gentlemen, I heard the message of Jesus Christ in seven minutes. Let me finish with this. I stood there. The first five minute was boring. It's about prostitute by the name of Mary Magdalene. Ah, we had thousands of prostitute here in New York, and some in the gangs. Okay, Mary, if you gonna follow us, that Jesus, be nice, okay? Don't hook no more. Be nice, girl. Then a demon possessed man, confrontation with Jesus, he will, pow! Total freak, careless. We had so many, thousands of thousands of demon possessed in New York. Including myself. That didn't touch me. You know what really touched me? And my mind wasn't there. Well, he grabbed me, stole my mind. The crucifixion of Jesus Christ, the last two minutes. He paint a picture that he took me. It was like I was there, I know what violence, violence, I know it because I was that kind of man. What they was doing to Jesus, the way they slapped his holy face, spit on his face, then whipping so many times, and then calling all kinds of name. And here Jesus, he didn't fought back. They crucify him, and here Jesus came out from his own mouth, forgiving. Because they don't know what they are doing. And I'm like this. I'm looking. And I tell you that, just like that, Wilkerson, I start crying. Crying so hard. And I was thinking, why did he crying? He not supposed to cry. Man don't supposed to cry. He was crying so hard. And then, just like that, through that microphone, he say, he's here. Jesus Christ is alive. Is not dead. Resurrected from the dead. It's a Christ of hope. It's a Christ that can change your life. And then he went, looking with his, with his eye, tried to look at where I was sitting down, and then, just like that, he called me, and he said, Nikki, let me pray for you. I say, no. It was Israel who stood up, and he told the preacher, eh, preacher, pray for me. I say, Israel, you crazy? No. I want you to come with me, Nikki. No, I am not going with you. You stood up, you go by yourself. Nope. I am not gonna leave you, Nikki, because you gonna get killed. I said, go, Israel, go, come on. Nope. I say, Israel, are you afraid to go by yourself? Huh? Okay, I go with you. And I stood up. And 25 guys, and their girlfriends, and my girlfriend, follow us. And there is, in front of Dave Wilkerson. What took place there, it was something that I don't, I cannot, I don't know how to explain it. It happened so fast. It was like a wind that came in so fast. One by one, my friend were falling on their knees, together with a girlfriend, and they were crying so hard. I can hear, I can hear the mourning and groaning, and the pain that was there, and the sorrow. That was a true sorrow. The girl was hugging their guys, and here, my, my girlfriends, she's crying, and then in that moment, I turned to Israel, and I hit him on his chest, I said, come on, let's get out of here, this ain't going crazy. Israel turn his face toward me, he was drowning tears. I said, Israel, do you believe that? Yes, Nikki. I just gave my heart to Jesus. I said, that cool, man. That's cool. Now I'm losing, the gangs are losing everything, and I lost my best friend six months before that. Here, Israel's going with this crazy maniac. And that he loved Jesus. And now, what I'm gonna do, I put my head down, I start kicking the floor with my shoes to distract myself, and kicking and kicking as hard. And then, silent tears began to betray me. The day, when I was nine years old, I promised that I would never cry again, and I would never love again. That night was totally different. There was no pride, there was no reservation, I careless. My enemy saw me crying, and I start crying, and crying, I was chucked up with so much pain, and memories was coming through my mind, the words of my mother, and all of these things, believing that I'm just living in a curse. And that day, I collapsed in the loving, in the loving arms of Jesus Christ. That night, I told Jesus, no, I didn't say I'm sorry, I didn't use that. I told him, help me. Help me, there's a Jesus Christ, please help me. Help me! Please. And that night, Jesus Christ set me free. That night, I was like a bird. Now I can fly, like a fly, like a eagle. And I can be the presence of the Lord, he forgive my, he forgave my sin. He did it. And I paid the price because I almost got killed after my conversion. But that didn't took Jesus away from me. Yes, I wanna tell you that Wilkerson was doing one thing. He wasn't just talking to a gang leader, or putting the finger to a gang leader, uh-uh. That was more deeper than that. What Wilkerson was doing, it was putting the finger into a curse, the curse all in my family. And I wanna tell you, right now, I am the most happy human being in this earth. I went to Puerto Rico, and I forgive my mother, my mother gave her heart to Jesus Christ. My mother brought my father to Jesus Christ, I renounced witchcraft. I'm gonna bless you, I will bless you. 13 of my brother gave their heart to Jesus Christ. Three of my brother ministered of the gospel of Jesus Christ. This is what Jesus can do. This is what he can do. Cause he did it. And you know what? Come with me, I'm gonna take you with me. Come with me to New York. Come to me to the E R, the emergency room. There's lot of commotion going on. Door are spreading open, as them push me in this bed. They rushing me, and then going and making curve, and everybody was in hurry. They want to put, they want to be sure that they're gonna go to the operation room. That, that took me, and then changed me from one little tiny bed to another one. And the light went on. And there I can feel that it, those light hurt my eyes. Then I, I felt something strange. Somebody was walking toward me, got close, close, close to me. Gently he went, and closed my eyes, and I went with it. Then I noticed that he opened up my chest. And when he opened up my shirt, my, my chest, he went all the way in, and pulled my heart out. I watched my heart pumping with life. I watching blood going through his fingers, hitting the floor. All the agony, all the hate, all the bitterness, all the rage. Everything that I had committed, there I see that going through his finger. Then I noticed that he put his, my heart close to his lips. He said something to my heart. And then he kissed my heart. He kissed my pain. And he put my heart back. Closed my check. Closed my chest. Wake me up. And when I open my eyes, ladies and gentlemen, I'm a new creation, I'm a new creature. I got a new heart, a heart of flesh, so I can feel him. I got a new mind, a mind that now is in Christ Jesus. And I thank God for life. And I thank God for being here. And I'm gonna do something here, I want the music to start, get your place. And you guys, the face, whether, you guys, you, come over here, help us singing over here. Yeah, that's, that's something, that's something to miss. Alright, connect your grid, give me the synthesizer, okay? And, and direct inquiry. This is gonna be the most toughest. You got to be tough. You got to be tough, to do what I'm gonna tell you to do, gonna take a lot of heart. Some of you, you got it? Some of you, you don't. Some of you, you afraid? Some of you, you careless. You wanna change. And that's what I'm gonna do right now. I'm gonna challenge you. You can go ahead with the synthesizer, don't wait for me, you should be already ahead of me. Like a supersonic. I'm gonna challenge you. This is not for chickens. Cowards. Cutless. Some of you have been damaged by the brutality of loneliness. It's so lonesome that you wanna die. How many time I was that close to commit suicide when I was a teenager? Fear. Rage. Hate. Hate the whole world. Hate myself because I was trapped. It just took Jesus to come and to help me. And yet I never asking for help. I'm gonna ask you. Some of you, to get out from wherever you are from you sit. Those people up there, don't think that you so high, that you so close to heaven, that you don't need to come down here. Either the people in the back. I don't want us, I don't want you to start looking, who gonna, who gonna be the first one, then I gonna go. Chicken. If you not afraid, just like I wasn't afraid to stand for Jesus, I want you to stand for Jesus. And I'm gonna tell you one thing, you never gonna walk. Never, 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 never gonna walk alone, because Jesus gonna be right there, pulling for you. Everybody standing, please. And we're gonna be singing, and I want you to get out from wherever you are. Now, some of you, I see so many young people, you, you brought your girlfriend. Tell your girlfriend that you wanna give your heart to Jesus, okay? And if your girlfriend don't wanna come, alright, alright, don't, 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 don't try to be tough. If she don't wanna come, leave your girlfriend there. Because God gonna give you another girl better looking than the one that you left there. You are no loser. You gonna be a winner. Get out from wherever you are, and you can bring your friend, your family. This is the day that God wanna do a miracle in your life. Get out from wherever you are, okay? Come on, start singing. Don't start looking around. Get out. Meet me right here, and I'm gonna pray for you. Don't be afraid. Come on, you guys, have the guts. Thank you, Jesus. Hallelujah. Pray, pray all over this prayer. It's to the power of prayer that I'm gonna break through. Come on, sing it. Come on, let that music go all the way off. Yes. Come on to the front, you guys, come on, don't stay there. We are in Jesus. Just come out from there. Hallelujah, yes. Beautiful, beautiful, beautiful. Come on, let's toss it into it. Spit it a bit. Some of you, you got your friend? Bring your friend, extend your helping hands, and tell your friend, listen, I have been praying for you for a long time, and I go with you. So Nikki can pray for you. Bring your friend. Do like Israel. It was Israel who took me to that place for me to get converted. I am not gonna be standing here begging you. Uh-uh, no, you, there's lot of backslider here that you need to come back home. And you knowing in your heart that, that you had turned your back on sweet Jesus. I'm gonna challenge you to get out. By the way, by the way, I'll be, I'm gonna be very honest. I am not gonna beg you. I am not gonna turn into, please, please, because you know, in this moment, how desperate you need help. How desperate you need Christ in your life. If, if any time, I'm being challenged, I've been challenged right now in this pulpit, and I challenge you. You know what? You say, Nikki, don't be so hard. You know what I'm gonna do? No, no, no. This is my last cry now from this microphone. Oh, yes, this is my last, last, last cry now, from my heart to your heart. From my soul to your soul. Turn to Jesus Christ. Don't be afraid of nobody in this room. For once in your life, be yourself. And you will see the glory of the Lord, your family will come and see miracle that you had never had seen before. Jesus Christ have made 99 steps for you. You just have to make one. My last, last cry now from this microphone. From my soul to your soul. From my heart to you, to your heart. Bring your friend, and bring your family, and stand right here. And if you have backslide, just come and get back what you had lost, okay? Can you do it? Can you do it? Go ahead, one more time. You come. Beautiful. Don't be afraid. Fear is not the power. Everybody sing it together. Please still come in, I'm gonna wait for you. I'm gonna wait for you. Who told you to stop? Are you getting lazy on me? What's the matter with you? Beautiful, come on. You can bring your daughter, your son. You know, we had to fight the devil and we will fight the devil. But you know, I'm not gonna hang around with chickens and cowards. This is a time to stand for Christ. Beautiful. I'm gonna tell you something, your marriage gonna be restored, your life, your children. Whatever you love, God gonna double, I'm gonna give you back to you. It's about time that you think positive, that God is a God of wonder, of miracle. And that you are the one who respond to this. We want to sing one more time and I want everyone, this place is so packed. I hope it's not packed with just Christians. Hope I didn't spoke to the choir. I still believe that before I say this prayer, there's gonna be a release in your life that you have never been released. Yes. Come home. Come home where you belong. Jesus is waiting for you. Those people you can turn to, you exit in the second floor and you can come all the way down. And we're gonna sing one more time. And we're gonna anointing that guitar and we're gonna anointing all those voices, all these musicians, everybody in this place. Hit it! In the name of Jesus, hit it! Yes! Yes! I am not ashamed of the gospel. Yes! One more time, one more time, yes. Blessed be the name of Jesus. Blessed be the name of the Holy Spirit. You know, we have no music. We're gonna unite our voices with the voices of all the angels in heaven and we're gonna sing. You know, one thing that I noticed, I noticed all over United States that we have gotten so used to having all these services and all of that. And some ways, somehow, we are missing. Some ways, somehow, we have forgot to rejoice for those who come to Jesus Christ. It's heaven right now. You know what happened in heaven right now? You know what you had done, all of you who came forward? Do you know what you had done? I'm gonna tell you what you had done. You had done one of the most greatest moments of history. You had touched the heart of Jesus so strong that he commanded all the angels, all the angels to sing for one person here that have given their heart to Jesus Christ. That's how powerful you are! You're powerful! We're gonna sing that without no music. All right? We're gonna put the word, it's there, holy, holy. Okay? Everybody, I want to see, you Irish people, don't you embarrass me? You supposed to have a lot of feelings and all of these things and hit with your head and knock somebody. No, 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 no. This, no, no, no. No, no, no. This, I want, I want the people of God to send a message to the devil that we are here to stay. And to hell with the devil. He can go to hell. All right? So if you don't sing, I'm gonna do like the Pope. All right? And now, you are the choir. I don't, I don't, what you doing with your clothes? You got to open up, that's right. That's, yeah, give me a smile. A real one, not give me nothing funny thing. Yes, give me a smile and let the people of God, as we're gonna pray in just a few minutes for all of you, let the people of God send a message straight to heaven and to the devil that he have been defeated, that this is something is coming to your country and nobody gonna stop the wave of the Holy Spirit. No one. No one. All right? We're gonna sing without no music.
Holy, holy, holy.
Everybody! And if you want to raise your hand, raise your hands to the sky. Forget all the people around you. Yes! Hallelujah! One more time! Hallelujah. 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 Holy Jesus, hallelujah. I want to hear from all the way back. The praises to the Lord. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Blessed be the name of Jesus. Okay, I'm gonna pray like I promised Pastor David that he's might be a little nervous because we had took so much time and this is evangelistic effort. And you are the one who gonna be, when you go home, be careful driving home, okay? So we're gonna pray for, come on, get close to me. Come on, you guys. Come on, what you doing over there? You don't want the people to see you? You're beautiful, you don't have to be afraid. Okay, come more close to me. Just sure I will pray for you. Shall we pray right now? This is the most sensitive moment in heaven because some people, some of you, you had issues to deal with. Issue with forgiveness and many things that that was my biggest problem. I didn't know how to forgive because forgiveness come from God, from Jesus. And I'm in the middle and I didn't know how to forgive myself. And then I had to forgive others and that was hard for me to forgive my mother. And if you ask me, it wasn't that easy. When I went to face my mother, because I left when I was a little boy, it wasn't easy. If you ask me literally, Nikki, in that time when I was in Bible school, Nikki, did you love, did you hate your mother? Did you hate your mother? I will be honest to you, I say, no, I don't hate my mother in that time, but I didn't love my mother. And I'm a born again person. This has to be the Holy Spirit who had to do that in you. And when he did it, my mother was dying. I went to Puerto Rico before she died because she sent me a letter that she wanted to see me before she died. And the lawyer who put me in the airplanes and gave me one ticket to come back if I stayed two hours. I want to tell you that the greatest thing it was to see have Jesus because my mother was nothing but a pack of bones, ready to die. That day, there were 250 people, Christians, who came to pray and they put oil all over the house. That night, something happened. Something that I'll never forget because I took my mother by myself physically. She didn't wake that much and I laid her flat on the sofa. And then right there, I felt, as I tried to say something, I started crying and crying. And then I felt like a raining day. I couldn't, I was crying so hard and then somebody just tried to pull my pants and I opened my foggy eyes and that was my mother. And that's when the forgiveness was in action. Because she asked me, can I call you, can I call you son? I says, you are my mother. You brought me to this world to know Jesus Christ. Can I kiss you? And I laid my cheeks. And she kissed me for the first time. And that night, I want you to understand this. That night, my mother gave her heart to Jesus. That night, the Holy Spirit came upon my mother. She quit her body and my mother was converted. And my mother lived for twenty-five years and seven months longer. That is the power of forgiveness. So deal with that, okay? Deal with forgiveness. Can you do it? Can you do it? Got to. Shall we pray? You close your eyes, don't be afraid. Nobody gonna steal your money because some of you are broke. Jesus, in this very moment, I thank you for those that, they just came because your Holy Spirit pushed them into these moments of relationship. Only you have the power to forgive sin. Only you can kiss our pains away because we hurting Jesus. And I pray, Father, that in this moment you would be so real that you touch every heart, that you kiss every pain from every heart and that you will allow the power of healing, just heal that heart and make that heart feel you, Jesus. Give them a heart of flesh so they can feel you. Give them a new mind, the mind of Christ. You are the Prince of Peace. Oh, Prince of Peace, come in into that mind. And you devil, all of us born again in this room, we are gonna unite our force with the forces of heaven. And we're gonna pray for these children that came forward. And right now, we're gonna send a message to you devil. Get your filthy, dirty hands out of these people's life in the name of Jesus Christ. In the name of Jesus, the blood of Jesus Christ. Amen.
If you've been challenged by Nikki Cruz's message and you want to know Christ in a similar way, please contact Revelation TV. We have a free booklet entitled "Life is Important," we gladly send to you. Before we leave, let's pray together. Why don't you say these words after me? Heavenly Father, I am sorry I have gone my own way. I repent and truly want to follow after you. Thank you for sending your son, Jesus Christ, to die on a cross for me. Now I pray you will enter my life. Live and reign in my heart and fill me with your Holy Spirit. Amen.